Amendments to the agenda, then we go to the bike and pedestrian?
Yep, I did get a cemetery deed coming. We can put that on a little bit.
And we want to make that motion?
Make a motion to add cemetery deed as a new business item G.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Alright, so now we will go to the bike and pedestrian grant discussion and approval. And I believe is Eric?
Yep. Eric, yeah, Eric, I'm gonna turn the, uh, turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, sounds good Joe.
Like we did last time, and I'm gonna turn the, uh, projector on.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna do what I did before.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Can you see my screen yet?
Yeah, my, uh, my projector's warming up.
Okay, just let me know.
We can see it, thank you.
Thank you.
Makes it worse. Put on my glasses, see how that is. Okay. Uh, close. Alright Eric, that's all you.
Okay, um, so this is a follow-up to the, uh, July 14 select board meeting where I went back through the alternatives, um, and then brought a new alternative four, which is pedestrian only improvements. Uh, based on the feedback from that meeting, uh, we added sidewalk, uh, reconstructed sidewalk to the east side of the project area. Otherwise, this alternative is untouched. So I guess I'll leave it to the board, um, I can go back over any of the alternatives or previous discussion if we need to. Um, but I guess what we're looking for tonight is endorsement of, um, a preferred alternative.
You want to hit the high spot real quick?
Sure.
We have not a lot of people here, obviously, but there'd be worth a while.
So we will start with alternative one. Um, this one proposed to turn all the parking into parallel parking, um, and then add, uh, on-street bike lanes. Uh, and then extend, uh, the, the path, uh, lock off the wide-open parking lot. Um, put a curbed island here, and generally just clean things up and, and reduce the curb-to-curb width a little bit. Um, that one, the, the big downside was that there was a significant loss of parking. Uh, so alternative two. Uh, left the angled parking, um, and it put the, uh, a ten-foot shared-use path on the outside of the parking. Um, and so that still did lose some spots, not as many as the parallel option, um, but there were some concerns about maintenance with this option. Um, again, uh, there's a dedicated bike lane on both sides of the road, and then this one carries a ten-foot shared-use path through the project limit. And then alternative three was, um, to add some back-end angled parking. Um, and what that allows you to do is have the bike lane in front of the parking instead of behind it. Um, it's a little bit unorthodox, um, it's recommended that this back-end-only angled parking get tested kind of off the thoroughfare, um, because it becomes really inviting for cars coming the opposite direction to just kind of turn in, um, head-first. Um, so, and that one also lost a fair amount of parking spaces. Uh, so what we landed on after the last meeting was, um, a new alternative, which is pedestrian improvements only, so essentially the roadway doesn't change at all. Um, we had curb extensions here, here, and a little bit here. Uh, this is all-new sidewalk along here. Um, and then this is rebuilt sidewalk along the east side. Uh, we still get the, uh, the access management with the island here and here. Um, but otherwise, it's, it's completely off the road except to help pedestrians get across. Does that sum things up sufficiently, or?
What, the, uh, original proposal, it was like three hundred and fifty thousand, what did this change due to the cost of pedestrian cost?
Yep, I can pull that up. Um, so this will show all four alternatives together, it did bring the costs up to about four hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, because of all the additional sidewalk on the other side, extra curb, um, and that is a pretty wide sidewalk too, so that's, that's why the jump in price.
Is, is that a complete tear-out and redo of that east side?
Yes.
So includes all the demo work, everything?
Yes.
Is that something our guys could do in kind to limit the cost?
Uh, potentially, yeah, I mean, it definitely some of the excavation, um, it's, you know, a contractor would just come in with, uh, you know, probably a small excavator and, and, um, and dig it out that way. And then if your town forces can, you know, handle setting the, um, the concrete to state specs, um, then that, yeah, absolutely. I mean, these prices are for a contractor to come in and do it, so this is like the in-place, uh, price. So the unit costs themselves for the materials would be a fraction of this.
Okay.
And refresh my memory that what you're looking for tonight is a thumbs up on concept and move forward, we're not voting, that's what I do that, I'm just putting, coming up to it.
That is correct, um, an endorsement of an alternative makes it eligible to go for grant funding for design and construction. It doesn't obligate the town to do anything. It just means that you've, out of this scoping process, the town has selected an alternative that they prefer, and, you know, what happens after today's meeting, after the report, um, gets filed is, is up to the town, you can either go forward with it or not.
Like, I still disagree with that green up there where they probably have snow, I don't think that green should be there. I don't think it's, uh, not a big concern, I mean, they moved the snow, that right there, you're gonna, all that's gonna do is create a situation where it's, and he's gonna block the path, ever the not, it shouldn't be there, keep pushing the snow on, pop, you're still gonna pull around or some way, you're not gonna be able to get in there. That green there should not be there.
No, I disagree, I, I.
Well, I'm sorry to disagree, but I'm telling you, if you ever work with equipment, you're not gonna have enough room there.
Sure you are.
Fine.
I mean, I, I.
You, you, let's try to look at reality here.
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I think that sometimes you have to, you have to make it.
And I mean, all it's gonna do is create a situation that's gonna be bad there.
Well, I, I, first of all, I don't think we can file snow there, ever.
Well, first of all, I don't think the green should be there.
I, I don't think it's gonna be that big a question.
That's gonna get problems.
You just run your plow around it.
Ah, you're not gonna have the room, if you got cars here, you're not gonna be able to get around there.
Yes.
If there's cars parked where the cars are, you're not gonna be able to get around or follow that there. Where you gonna put your pile of snow when they do what you're doing?
So, yeah, we shouldn't put all there, right?
They move it immediately if it's there, these guys do that now.
That's what I mean, they do anyways.
But still, that green shouldn't be there, it's gonna be, it's gonna create a problem.
Well, how much clearance is it between the end of the pair and the green?
Uh, I could, I probably won't be able to measure, um, right now, but it's, it's roughly twenty feet.
Twenty feet, so you put a car in there?
No, no, I, sorry, twenty feet behind the cars. Probably about thirty to forty feet total width.
I don't believe it. I don't think it should be there.
But I think that the theory is to get, to shorten up the, shorten up the, the crosswalk.
And what's the problem with the asphalt there, I, I don't understand why everybody feels they gotta get rid of that asphalt that's there. What's, they squawked because we put that, that, because. Papa parked there last year, they squawked because that was there. You put that green there, it's gonna take your, it's gonna take the, the, it's just gonna make a mess, it shouldn't be there.
So, I can, sorry, go ahead.
But, well, my only question, Eric, is when you go and, it's a lot, can you do this, like, when you move forward, if we decide, if we get grants and go forward, is it, like, a pick list, we can decide that, whether we, we do the, that, that green island or not, as long as the major part of the, I'm just trying to look to say, are we, are we good with the major part of the project, was, if I remember right, trying to force people to, if these are needed, to have people start using that, that crosswalk?
What's that got to do with that green? It's nothing at all, the green shouldn't be there, need the crosswalk where they've got it, but the green shouldn't be there.
Well, I just, the idea is to get that, to get green space back and, and to, and to shorten up the width of the road, that, that, I mean, it isn't a deal killer, don't get me wrong, yeah.
I think it is.
I don't think it is, but I don't, it isn't to me if we take the green out.
Just like the other spot where you got the green in this part here in the park, and it was all that parking there, all the handicap parking right there.
So, um, I, maybe I can just interject on the purpose of that island?
Just leave everything the way it is. Why not? What's wrong with what's, I mean, you can, you can increase, you can take care of your sidewalks and stuff like that, but why would you take something away, why would you take parking away of what we got? Why wouldn't you eliminate the, uh, handicap parking there, the free parking area? All this is, all this is, is an engineer looking for something to spend money on. In this, it's crazy, it's very lengthy, sir. Where are you gonna come up with four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
We're applying for the grant.
Whether we apply for the grant.
I think it's ridiculous, but there's other places that we could use money other than there.
But, but if you're talking, whether, whether we go for the grant or not, these sidewalks are terrible, half of them fit.
Absolutely, I think, I think.
And having a better sidewalk down through here, so we.
I'd rather, I'd rather see those sidewalks in front of the stores, too.
That's what I'm saying, that the green part, it is not a deal killer to me, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it, but it's not a deal killer, let's, let's concentrate on the larger scope of the project and, and either yea or nay it tonight, and we, we're not committing to anything except to apply for grants with this project, with this plan. And if we change, so, in the future, why?
I think we, we already agreed on it, take away the, I'm concerned about the handicap parking, whether or not we have the green, we already agreed.
I, I thought we were gonna take this one out.
I did too, because I'm, I'm worried about the people at Parkview that live there, um, but anyway.
So.
We agreed, we basically agreed. Right?
Fine with me, I mean, I, I don't, we're gonna do something different in this free parking anyway.
We have, all we're doing is, we've already got a plan to take care of the parking lot. So now this plan comes in and it's gonna screw up what we already got going on for the other parking lot.
Why do you say that?
Because that green isn't part of the original parking lot.
Why are you so focused on, I just said it doesn't have to be.
Because that, it's, you, you know, you just go ahead with everything, say, yeah, go ahead and do it, but you don't even look at the consequences, what's gonna happen here. I worked around equipment all my life, I'm telling you that, but that green spot is, it's gonna make a problem. You got no place to move anything around. You're gonna be, and even that green there, if you leave that green in that parking lot, there's gonna be snow all over the top of it, and it's gonna be destroyed with the years. You've lost your handicap park.
Question is, do we want it, do we want to pursue this or not? And that, that should be the, that should be the only thing we can, we can modify as we go.
If we're doing sidewalks, fine, but the rest of that stuff, I say no.
What's the point of it, you don't need to draw this on all of the meters.
Well, are we voting on this or that?
So, what Eric is gonna need is a, a vote from the board to accept or deny this. And from that point, the board has adopted this as their plan, and then they're eligible to apply for bike and pedestrian funding, which can fund everything, or one thing, or nothing. It's, it's, you can carry pick the things you like.
One quick, I thought when guys were in here about the bikes, they said they didn't want to run the bikes down Main Street, they wanted to run the bikes down Adams. Alright. Alright?
Yeah, we're not including the bike path, there's no bike path.
It's bike and pedestrian, this actually.
Doesn't matter, that's the, that's the pedestrian part.
They can ride their bikes down the new sidewalks, but we're not putting the bike on where.
Yeah, we're not putting a bike path, that doesn't matter at all.
He just said the bike path is behind the parked cars.
No, he didn't, okay, Jesus, what's?
He did say that, he said there's gonna be a bike path behind the cars, or in front of them, one or the other.
That's a different, that's a different alternative, that's not this one, this alternative is purely pedestrian.
Says it right at the top, pedestrian improvements only.
So, what, once again, what's the, what's the pleasure? I mean, we're looking to, we're looking to pursue a grant to try to get some, at this point, sidewalks.
Right, because either way, we're gonna have to fix sidewalks, and it's gonna cost us about five hundred thousand, and whether we get fifty percent of that paid for grant, all the days, we'll take any money we can, because.
Where did you put the five hundred thousand, this whole project's on a house of twenty-five.
It's not, that can't be a ton of money, putting two little green patches, don't put them in, you don't need them.
Look, let's, let's get away from that.
If it's for sidewalks, strictly sidewalks, I would vote for it, but if it's for just other stuff in there, I say no.
Isn't that discussion for next time, really? We're doing this to apply for the grant, whether or not the green spots are in there will be discussed once we hear if we get the grant.
In file plan.
Yeah, that's what we'll, we just need a motion to accept this as the plan.
Might entertain.
Yeah, I want you to do it, I'm not an expert.
I, I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the concept of the plan for, for replacing the sidewalks. And, and, again, with the situation in that motion that we, we, uh, uh, talk about the grass island, if we were to get the grant.
You know, the, the.
It's plan, that's alternative four.
The alternative four.
Alternative four, I endorse alternative four, we still have, we, we have some concerns around the grass islands. But I, but as far as going forward, conceptually with this right here, uh, I'm, I'm making a motion to move forward with this alternative.
Eric, second?
Second.
Any other discussions?
Does that satisfy Eric?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't quite hear, but it sounds like it was endorsed.
We're endorsing, if, if this passes, we're endorsing option four.
Okay, yep, that, that works, and then I can include, um, a copy of the minutes for this meeting and then wrap up the report that way.
Everybody okay with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 You're both?
Yep.
Somebody else?
Alright, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, bud, come on. We spend more money on grants than spend more money on studies than any town I've ever saw in my life. You're too many towns, man, the ones that are moving forward have a lot of possibilities.
Eric, can you hand me the meeting back?
I think I just did Joe, so you should be off that.
Eric, Eric, we appreciate every, all your work, thank you.
Eric, you're doing a heck of a job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, it was, it was great working with you, and I'll finalize that report and work with Joe to, to wrap everything up.
Beautiful, thanks.
Thanks guys.
Thank you, again. Uh, approving of the minutes, uh, July twenty-eighth.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for July twenty-eighth as written.
Second?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections?
All, I'm, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I wouldn't hear.
Okay. Five minutes for public comment. Go on.
Glad to see the tree is gone on, uh, Marvel and, uh, Adam Street corner. You got that out of there today, the century. And at the last meeting, I came away from here thinking that the remarks on, are you going in or out here? Further on the building, uh, because we're awake now, see what the outcome of the beam was. I'm gonna replace the beam in the, in the apartment. I walked in the other day and they were stripping all of the walls, up off the walls here, getting, uh, removed, the whole hallway. Their hall, my ass, what was going on, girls were there, and they said, oh, we gotta get all this out of here, get this in front of the elevator going. Wondered why we were even doing that, now they've done it, and it sure hasn't got any place to put his, uh, noses up, or, or this is up.
What's the status, Hope, because I wasn't hearing that, what is the status of the beam?
Uh, the, we have a quote from Ferguson's repaired beam, and the insurance company is looking through the quote to, uh, decide if they have funded it or not. I'm waiting to hear back.
So, so it was my understanding that they may be getting ready, but they won't start putting the elevator in until we're sure we're, with, is the beam to be fixed? I, I'm just trying to paraphrase what everyone's trying to get at, Joe.
Yeah, uh, I understand the, the concern, it's like, well, if the beam's not gonna be fixed, then we can scrap everything. Um. I can't disagree with that, if the beam can't be fixed, but the beam can be fixed, it seems foolish after, uh, two years of fundraising and, um, getting plans drawn up and right at the point of construction to say, you know, well, let's stop, this is nuts, let's stop, that's, that seems extremely foolish, so, um, if the insurance company does decide not to fund, we can find grant funding to help repair that. But to stop right now after, like, the USDA said, after fifteen years of wanting to get this done, to pull the plug ex-construction is just, that is exactly what you just said.
Joe, Joe.
It's a nut idea.
Joe, is there?
If we pull, if we pull the plug though, Jeff, it will never start back up. Let's, I, I've seen a lot of small towns do this kind of thing, and they, they get, they get nervous, and then they just stop.
Go ahead, Jeff, what were you gonna say?
What, why are we even talking about the insurance company not funding this, are we worried about that?
Not at all, I'm not, I'm not worried about it at all, they, they understand that it was damage caused by that hole, but I can't give a hundred percent until they give me a hundred percent.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was something we didn't know.
No, everything, everything I know, you know.
Okay.
So you're gonna guarantee that nothing's gonna start here until after the beam's put in, and then inspection of the building, stating that Jeff Sears is gonna be safe enough to do what we want to do?
No.
No construction at all?
No, that's, I'm not guaranteeing that, Jeff.
You're not, you're gonna, you're telling me you're gonna let them start putting an elevator in with, I think you're, I think it's crazy.
If, if the board votes to stop the project, that's, that's more broadly.
I'm just saying, pro, pro, postpone it until we know for sure what's going on with the building.
When there's construction scheduled to get going?
Um, he still hasn't released the RFP, USDA has some, uh, questions about the historical nature of it, uh, the building, but it should be September, October, release for RFP.
For the RFP, so we're not really talking about something before the beginning of, or the end?
No, no.
Even maybe next spring, really.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern, but we should have, we, we've seen, how many times have we even seen a project roll in, almost start, and then stop? Because somebody pulled the plug so quickly.
What I'm saying is, Joe, if they can't, if this beam is put in, and the upstairs still isn't considered, be able to take any type of weight up there, why are we gonna throw money, I'm not saying stop the elevator, I'm saying postpone it until we know what's going on here.
I will get that beam fixed.
I, that's not what I'm saying, I wanna make sure, I've got, uh, uh, something from the state stating that the upstairs is, you can use the upstairs, before you put an elevator, I mean, that's a lot of money to put in, not be able to use it.
I agree with that, and, and, but we're, it doesn't mean stop, it, I mean, go get the RFP, get, get people in line, get people ready to go. And by that time, we should have the AOK from the beam, and we're, we should be ready, then we're, then we're ready to go, is all I'm saying. I don't think, well, I think we're all talking the same thing, we're just talking around it, we're, there is nobody here that wants to stop, stop this construction, I mean, I, I think the furnace and, and, and that kind of thing like that is just too important.
We've all seen this happen, like, there's a lot of nervousness around what-ifs, and this is just one of those what-ifs. At, at the end of the day, I'm gonna put my shoulder into it, I'm gonna get the beam fixed, and I'm gonna put an elevator in.
All I want, Joe, all I wanna see is something that says that the upstairs is gonna be okay, so people can go.
I agree with that.
And I don't see, any construction should start until we have that, like.
Yeah, well, I think we're, yeah, we're, we're a ways away from that as well. I mean, we're, we're really looking at spring before, before the, if you're, if you're not even sending out a, the RFPs until September, October.
Yeah.
People are, people are gonna be, uh, hesitant to do that kind of work in the middle of the winter, but they might wanna, but in the meantime, we'll have time to, we'll know where we're at with the beam.
I got one other simple thing, coming out of Prospect Street on the south main, when you look up the hill at the rear end back, rush is going up, so you can't see up the hill to see what's coming over the hill, that's gotta get caught, or someone's gonna get hurt.
Anything else, anybody else? Alright. Permanent head reports.
My magic time.
There you go.
Okay, um, we talked to Mike Applet today, um, he said paving would begin next, well, first he said this week, it's then pushed back to next week. Um, and they're gonna start the paver on the eighteenth, he's gonna start near the high school, to get those two, get pine and mechanic flattened up, uh, for school starts. Uh, Canarvan is still scheduled for the twentieth to start grinding. Um, he was concerned about paving the middle of the village before Canarvan was ground down, to want everything to kind of blend together at those intersections. Uh, we got an update from Eagles Club, yeah, I'm not sure if I told you guys, um, the larger Eagles organization's come down and, and asked the club to, to calm it down with their motorcycles. They've actually threatened to, uh, disband the club if they keep it up, keep up the noise and disorderly conduct. Uh, the police are, uh, monitoring the situation. Uh, also on, uh, the police South Main, they've had a heavy presence down there, there's been a lot of speeders, uh, thirty-two tickets, I think, as of.
I wanna thank, because it has made a lot of difference. You know, they, they, and they're, they seem to be down there later in the afternoon and early evening, and I think that's when we had the biggest problem with the speeders. And I think it has helped a lot, it seems to slow a lot of it down. But can we go back to the Eagles Club just for a second? It's not just the motorcycles, they've got dogs tied up out under trucks, they've got dogs in the trucks, they're barking continuously, um, you know, and it's, since they opened in April, it's been a total different club than what it was, I lived here for over thirty years, and I've never had a complaint with Eagles Club. And since April, it's been just totally, totally ridiculous.
Yep. Yeah, I think last time it was a little quieter, I've noticed it was quiet.
They still had a couple motorcycles over there, a few while, as a matter of fact, I called them, I'm one of them. And, uh, but it's, you know, the Allegion had almost three hundred motorcycles there two years ago, I don't know, and you wouldn't even know when they left, because of the way they left, and, and, there's no reason for the activity that we get.
Just, just to echo some of what you're saying, it's, uh, not last weekend, the weekend before, I was there when my daughter called the police because the dogs barking, the noise, uh, that's going on there. Now, the good news was last weekend seemed to be better, so hopefully.
Well, they did send out notices that.
Well, it's still up to the, the manager and the, and the bartenders to control it, and if they don't, they're, our ultimate thing is not to recommend for a license, but that's, that's pretty drastic, and that's, you know, they should know that, that the town has the op, has the right, if, if, if the rights continue, that the town has the right to take the license.
Absolutely.
Uh, letters did go out to the property owners about their overgrown bushes, uh, I was working with the, uh, street boarder, I would call me a street boarder, um, about West Street, and I was working with BLCT about West Street, um, we sent out warning letters to the, to the owners of the property. I tried to get in contact with a phone call, but, uh, I only got one person, because the letters seemed kind of grumpy, so I like to kind of just talk to them and say, this is what we're afraid of. Uh, the one person I did talk to was very understanding, even though they wanted us to cut the tree down. Um, and a good response, she said she'd get at it sometime later this summer, so, we'll, we'll see. Um, and a good response, she said she'd get at it sometime later this summer. So, we'll, we'll see what happens over there.
We'll see how the visibility improve.
Yeah, uh, letters, we sent those letters out to the businesses, and we had six, six business owners that would like to apply for the state grant, the business grant this year. Um, I'm still waiting to see my first grant, so we'll see. Uh, I did send out an email to those who expressed interest. Let them know, don't give up if, if they want some help started. We have a lot of people that are willing to help.
That's a, a couple of, of interesting, uh, and, and I'm not sure how to deal with it, but, uh, I think the Legion is going to apply for one. And I think the rescue squad is gonna apply for one.
Yeah.
I don't know how that fits into the criteria, but that, one thing I know that they were having a, um, one of, one of the sections is that there should be, if you can, get a, get a letter of, uh, recommendation from a select, select one or something like that. The suggestion was that there was some sort of form letter so that, that, you know, rather than, you know, rather than it all be all skewed, it can be written, signed on its way. I mean, I'm still, still passionate on my mind whether those two entities are, should be considered businesses.
They'll, I think the state does have a nonprofit.
Oh, they do.
For, yeah, for that category, so I think, uh, I think they'll be.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
Marble, uh, we did have trouble, that tree on Marble Street, we did have trouble finding that somebody cut that down, but finally, the, we told the guys, like, either do it or we're gonna find somebody else. Uh, and they showed up. So now it has another tree gone.
The tree is gone?
Uh, that's tree.
That's good.
We just, were you gonna talk about this?
No, that's actually one of the.
That's one of my post-ideas, that tree.
Which one are you talking about now? The one that's on the corner of?
Like, there you've been in?
Yeah. Oh, I thought that's where you wanted to put this tree. Oh, I wanted.
Yes, yes, but no, not that idea, but it's good. Well, um, we are gonna, so there's another, I think it might be a big ash, it's an ash or elm right there on, uh, Maine, South Maine, that's shedding a spark. So we're gonna take that down too. Um, we should have a nice big lump of, of good dry firewood. We'd like to, uh, pop for that, again, like we did last year, for both people to bid on it and then take it out. I think we made twelve hundred dollars when it's coming to put that. So it's not bad money. Uh, bush season's coming up, Beth has the paperwork, and October sixth, I think, is when we start that process. Uh, the mayor's still doing really well. Uh, they're up to forty-two hundred dollars in masks, and they're having a little birthday party on Saturday in the park as a fundraiser for the dog and the, and the playground. So she's doing wonderful.
Got a good picture in our, our.
What's that? Bring your total up too, Joe, for playground.
Um, we're right around thirty last time I saw. It might be a little bit more now. They made a deposit today.
And what's your end goal?
Uh, we need eighty to apply for a grant. The, the entire project came to a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
It's a lot.
So it's a fifty-fifty?
Yeah. Last, so last time we applied for this, this grant, they, they funded five people and we were number six. So I would rather not have known I was number six, cause I was, it's so ridiculous. So we did well, just not well enough.
Very well.
Um, Thursday, so we talked about sexual harassment training, I think at the last meeting. Thursday, I'm meeting with our insurance company to, to start scheduling that. They come down, they're coming down anyway to talk, um, risk management, and this will be part of that conversation. It's something we should have been doing for a couple of years, but you know, it's just, like everything else, some things just get, get put off. Uh, a couple things from the departments. Um, ten atoms, this is from the police department. Ten atoms that received a, a five hundred dollar fine for all their junk, and they've been fined for their dogs, again. They can be fined every day, the five hundred dollars every day if they don't clean that property. Um, we're, we're leaning hard on these folks now. We, we gave them enough opportunity.
Is that what you're talking about, doing down the west street, Joe? With all the junk outside the house, batteries and all that kind of stuff?
Where's that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, and we not there yet, we're not there yet. Uh, twenty-seven great, same thing. Uh, huge piles of junk around the entire house. Uh, we're gonna start leaning on this guy as well. Um, and there've been a couple of dog bites, which the, the police have issued citations. Um, the victims of those dog bites, though, for some reason, they think the town is gonna find them some money. We don't collect money like that. It's, it's up to the individuals to litigate against other individuals. The town doesn't get involved with tracking down cash. Let's see, BPW, we already talked about paving, Adam Street. Uh, they took a couple trees down on Sharon Drive that blew down from that bad storm a couple weeks ago. They were dangerously low. Uh, the equipment, so the mower, they did find a deck. Instead of just keep welding that same mower deck back together again, they found a deck for fifty dollars and put our blade into it. So they test drove it yesterday. It works well. They're gonna get back at roadside mowing this week. Um, I keep saying it'll be done this week, but I've not been right yet, so I can't give you a time for when it's gonna be done. Um, looking forward, paving next week. Um, after that, Depot Street is on the agenda to get that, uh, catch basin done and that outlet into the river done. Scott Hill after that. So that's, that's the big stuff. They did patch a little bit of Scott Hill, uh.
Did a nice, did a nice job on Culver. That was all out, and they paved over that nice.
Yeah.
Pop holes are starting to get.
Yeah, they, they're out.
A little deep, up there on the other end, yeah.
Yeah, they, uh, they're very, they're, they know about the, the projects going. Uh, our first hydro flush is pretty much done. We're gonna do the second flush in early October. Um, again, so we used to do this twice a year. I'm trying to get them back on schedule to do this twice a year, just like they always had done. Um, meters, there's, there's a hundred, about a hundred meters remaining to, to install. They have seven to do this week, which either brings them down to ninety-three or brings them down to a hundred. I wasn't sure how the math looked out, but, um, we're right there. A-one has finished flushing most of our sewer mains. Um, they're taking a break while we're under construction. They'll be back to finish that up. Um, and next meeting, the Adam Street pump station is on the agenda to talk about. That system is, is almost completely failed. And the Academy Street pump station is usually a bit of a repair.
I, I thought we just rebuilt that.
We did, about four years ago.
Adams?
Yeah. All new pumps, different chat, everything else.
Adam Street now?
Yep, we put, we did put pumps in it.
I thought we just, we just, I thought we went through a grant or something to take care of Adam Street pump station.
Yeah, they, they did put some pumps in it, but the, and they have replaced some parts on the control panel. The control panel itself, they, they fixed it so many times, they, they said they could keep putting parts in it, but they're not sure it's gonna work. So, but.
I thought, I thought Pete budgeted some money for that.
There's like sixty thousand dollars the board allocated to that, to, well, to pump station repairs.
Will that, will that cover what they gotta do?
It's gonna be broken. It'll be broken. And that's, that's it?
That's all?
Not bad, right?
Um, no old business. Um, new business, the grand list adjustment.
Yeah, so in your packet, there was, there were three properties that had errors. Um, we talked to the state how to, how to rectify these errors. Um, and they said, take the corrections in the board to select them. Um, we need a motion for the board to make these adjustments, to patch them in.
I have a question on this. On John LeBate. They said they'll buy, oh, buildings routinely omitted from property returns. And then on the other part, where all the buildings not transferred with partial and split, the sale was taken. They're the same buildings. Why is one for fifteen thousand, two hundred, another for fourteen thousand, eight months?
Fifteen thousand, so hang on, let me, uh.
Same place. Same buildings. I mean, why?
That's what they're doing. They're taking those buildings and putting them on the other parcel, on, on the son's parcel.
Cause it was worth fourteen.
Yeah.
Cause it was worth fifteen thousand to begin with, and now it's on a fortune thousand. Why? And the same building.
I, I got the explanation page, uh, on August fourth, twenty twenty, when they said, uh, um, something about, uh, uh, John LeBate came in the mister's office and heard the NFI outbuildings on the property and informed the listeners, that two outbuildings had been removed from the property several years ago without, well, I thought it was, I made the assumption, maybe I was wrong, did it, it was different because there were two that were removed, not that, not the three, underneath it, it says, these outbuildings were removed and the assessment altogether is for three outbuildings now. Sounds like there were two other outbuildings. That, uh, the listeners sent a letter of explanation. Is that why?
I mean, that's what makes it a little more challenging.
I was just trying to figure out all the two, all the two that they got rid of.
So there were two, only one garage is on the property, so they left that garage there and pulled two off.
So I figured the difference was because it was, it wasn't three buildings and three buildings.
It wasn't.
It was, it was, two buildings were removed.
Yep.
Altogether, there's three outbuildings, right?
Exactly. The, the reduction is, and, yeah, you're right. It's because they had removed two buildings and then one garage, which was, which decreased that value. So.
But the same question, I, I understand your question, because I look at.
If one day they remove a better building, well, that explains why it's different.
Yeah.
So are you, are you looking for individual motions on each alter, each three of the, uh, adjustments that the air sheet has?
Yeah, so this, this was new to everybody in town hall. I figured having an individual motion for each property would make it clear.
Okay.
Could you tell me what the difference is on Brussels?
Tom? Yeah. Um, he was, he was in the system seeing if, uh, energy improvements increased, what energy improvements would increase his overall assessment. And when they printed the grand list, he had forgotten to take those assessments off, which he doesn't have. So he was overbilled by however much that was, a hundred thousand.
One increase?
Yep.
So he was just plugging in the, plugging in the things to go to, me the difference would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, he used, he used the letter to date of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Right.
He pulled it, oops.
Hey.
Alright, uh, so, uh, I would talk to you, I'll make a motion to approve the change in assessment for Tom Russo and Joy Sayer, uh, on Scott Hill, the stand number, two one six zero zero, or zero seven zero, one zero one six six, from two hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Do a second.
Second.
Can I ask one question that, uh, occurs to me? Should this be the border civil authority in total or just us?
Just you, yeah, we called, uh, Nemrick, and I clarified it via, uh, BLCT. They actually sent the, uh, the BSA that supported this process.
Okay. As long as those guys aren't involved. Everybody understanding what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve change in assessed value for property owner, uh, owned by John and Janet LeBate, located in Washington Street, with stand number two one six zero seven zero one one four one five, from seventy-eight thousand one hundred to ninety-two thousand nine hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Although, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the change in assessed property value for the property owned by Jason LeBate, located on Lewis Lane, with stand number two one six zero seven zero one one three one five, from one hundred and sixty-one thousand to one hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second?
Second.
Well, everybody okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Claire's not here to discuss the trees. We'll defer that until next time. Is that what you wanna do, or do you wanna just?
She didn't seem, no, she, she said, feel free to chat about it. She didn't seem upset that we were moving forward.
Okay.
First that tree gonna just planted, that's all.
What is it? Is this just a copy of what it would look like at some point?
Yeah, so in this, so yeah, in your packet, there's a, there's a picture of where, where the tree would go, and then the big red picture, front view, is the, is the, um, red sugar maple, that, that's kind of what it was.
That wants to.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not quite that big yet.
We're just, we're just.
Trying to solve it, we didn't.
Or is this, this is for the tree? That's one of the three things.
Yeah. So this is located in the park, right across from where the old Greek restaurant was, where the tree was, is being replaced, if I'm looking at this picture correctly?
Uh, yeah, across from the community bank.
The community bank?
Yeah.
There was an elm tree there, something. There was an elm, or we tried an experiment with a new, new kind of elm and it died, just like the old elm did. So.
Yeah, we did get a quote from carpenter in Costin. Um, the total cost was one thousand nine hundred and fifty. They would come in and, and grind down the stump, um, bring in the tree, you know, excavate deep enough and then put the tree in, in above the general vicinity. They can't put it where the stump is, but it would be a few feet over.
And it looks like there's plenty of money in our tree replacement fund, it's like fourteen thousand?
Yes, there's more than fourteen thousand.
Near mark for that? So are you looking for a motion to go and replace it, or?
Yeah, this seems like the, the park is such a special place for the town that I thought the board of selection should, should be the ones to decide if and where. This, this doesn't seem like an administrative issue. So if the board is interested, we can put a tree there, and if they're not, then we don't.
What was that amount again?
One thousand, eighteen fifty.
Oh, okay.
Why is this part of the park? Is that, that a purposeful plan? This hole here, is that for what, when there's things over across the street or parades or?
I don't know, if it's just trying to.
Wondered why, that's all.
I don't know. It, it's never been designated for anything, except for that, it's actually a little ways away from where the actual festivities happen, too.
Yeah, it just seems weird, we're squeezing another one in there and what's over here.
I guess they were trying to keep some green space.
That's what I was wondering. Yeah. That's an aside, though, I, you know.
Worked out that way. I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was planned, but they get this kind of worked out that way.
So I'll make a motion that we spend one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and put a red sugar, sugar maple in the place where we removed the dead elm in the park.
Second.
Are you okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Would, would you say that was a motion to take one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars out of?
Out of the, out of the tree replacement fund of fourteen thousand fifty?
Twenty-five years.
Word that, Joe?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And twenty-five years from now, we can, uh, invite the then governor down to Texas.
And twenty five years from now, we can invite the then governor down to practice.
Who's Dave Calvin? He's not here.
No, we'll wait, we'll, we'll skip and see if he shows up. And not, we'll defer that. Uh, grant submission ideas. I don't know what that means.
Yeah. So, um, so the businesses, they have their opportunity to submit grants to the, uh, to the state. And so does the town of Perry. So two years ago, we've got twenty thousand, nineteen thousand dollars for the restroom trailer. Um, I figured I'd ask again. I asked the departments if they had any suggestions um, for grant funded projects. The police said they'd like a new porch. Um, my, my thought was a sprinkler system for the upstairs. Uh, that would release some of the grant funding we've already received through other, uh, grant funded, um, upgrades. Uh, we did talk about, I mean, a concession trailer down next to the restroom trailer. Bathroom rehab down here, the second floor of the, um, town hall. Or heat pumps upstairs.
That question for you, Joe. You mentioned upstairs bathroom. And about the downstairs, I think it all's done for handicapped accessibility.
That's what.
That, that's what number four is?
That is downstairs.
ADA compliant?
Just, yeah, it would be to, and that and an upgrade.
An upgrade to refurbish the bathroom downstairs?
Yeah.
I need it.
That would be where I, that or the sprinklers.
We do have plans for the bathroom downstairs?
Oh, you have plans?
Yeah. When, when the guy was putting together the plans for the, for the upstairs, he drew some plans up for the bathrooms downstairs. He was, he was doing it. So. They're both good projects.
Yeah. I mean, either, if you're, you're not, you're not looking for most, you're just looking for clarity. You think we might, would want to apply?
Yeah.
Want to apply for both? The sprinkler and the bathrooms?
We can. We've, we've been pretty successful, but I don't know. If you win both, you take both, because it'd be a twenty thousand dollar match.
But again, I would think we should look at the heat pumps upstairs before you do the sprinkler system. Can't have a sprinkler system without heat. I mean, yes. It's going to freeze, it's going to freeze on you with no heat.
That was my.
Well, what's the?
I mean, not, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at a sprinkler system, but I think we should make sure we got heat up there before we go to this. Well, sprinkler, sprinkler system is dry, so it's charged. Can't freeze.
No, we're.
Not charged.
That one's a lot more effective than Charlie. But what, what are we playing for heat up there now?
The, the playing with heat pump?
I think you're all good projects, but I think we gotta. Pick out. Something.
The one if we get it, we could move on right now today is the, we, we have the thing, the bathrooms downstairs.
That would be great. No, that'd be my suggestion.
That's, that's the one we could do that we don't, it's not, we're not waiting for beam or not.
It's not going to bother.
Done anyway. It's the only reason I'm, I'm saying.
It's not going to bother them because that's down here and you're going to use it right.
And, and if they're not ADA compliant, at some point they will activate. And it's surprising that we haven't been called on it.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at it, it's probably the most, it's probably the cheapest one from all of the people that have looked at non-mission parking. Or the porch, the porch is. Very important.
Jeff, any thoughts?
Just make sure that if, if we do the bathrooms downstairs, that they are ADA compliant. Once you make the changes, because I bet we're grandfathered in by not touching them. But once you do an upgrade, I'll bet they'll have to be.
I don't, how? Okay. I, I didn't know that they did grandfather ADA stuff.
I don't know if they did, but that's probably why nobody's picking on you because you you, you haven't touched it.
Well, well, yeah, well, let's. Is it, is it, since this is a board that we look at bathrooms, is that?
Yeah. Yep.
Let's do that. I don't think we need most of that. Just.
No, you can chase it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did he have a, did he get any designed bathrooms? Does he have any?
I'll have to go back and look. Cause he did, he was, he wanted to store everything in fifty cent at this building. So I'll go back and look. If I don't.
Don't blame him. Could use it. All right. Many questions. Uh, ballot language for one percent option?
Yeah. So there, there were a couple typos. I printed this, uh, the sheet out and then Glenn pointed out, I had a few typos. Um, the one that was actually on the table is a good one. Um, this is, if the board is happy with the way this sounds, this would be what I would start to distribute.
I'm a little leery of property tax. Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's, or four hundred and twenty dollars, don't, don't tie that.
What are you talking about?
Yeah. Where it says, if you're, you have a hundred and eighty thousand dollar house, your property tax will go up four hundred and twenty dollars if we do it that way.
No, that was, so you're, you're looking at the old.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You, using.
Underneath that?
I was using two years ago tax information. So using this year's tax information. Uh, it's actually about a hundred.
Okay. That, that makes me feel.
Yeah. And then the calculations are, I gave you the calculations for the sewer rate. And then I used Suzanne's tax bill. So if you want to, you know, just see the front numbers there, it's, it's there.
So when you're looking for the language, are you talking about article one and article two on the flyer or the language you want to ballot?
That language, um, yes and no. So the, the language, the proposed article language, I'll need a vote on that. Yes, that's the language of the lawyer gave us. He said this, this, he felt was the way to go. But I'd also like, uh, it doesn't have to be a vote, but at least some kind of approval on the sheet. Since it is coming from the board, I'd like the board's voice to come out with this.
I'll watch the third increase.
Few, few thousands, thousands.
Oh, there you go. Our taxes are supposed to one hundred fifty. I almost forgot about that.
If you, if we did it like a one or two percent out of the ten one, your property tax.
Were you, were you thinking this going out with water bills? Uh, how, how are we going to disseminate this information? Because you still would have quite a few, but when out with water bills, quite a few people who aren't on taxpayers will be voting. We need a way to get it to them. So I would, are we, are we just going to send it out and mail?
Are we going to have to send out another tax bill here shortly?
Yeah. It depends on if the budget passed, yeah.
Good point.
No, no.
Yeah, I agree. That would be.
We got to have a second tax bill for the school, right? And why can't you put it in the tax bills?
I, I like.
We can.
I like that.
That way, as he just said, everybody that pays taxes are going to get.
I like that.
We, we had pretty good success, uh, last time with the, what we did with Wayne's information about the bond vote. So I figured we'd do something similar to that. Transfer station. Social media, website, yeah. And then direct mailing too. This is important.
So you need an art, you need a motion for the proposed articles?
Yes.
Right?
For those two articles. That puts us on record as being in favor or not. Article, yeah, yeah. We don't vote for them, we don't vote for them.
Yes.
This is, this is, is this going to be voted on in February or, or March, or is it going to be voted on November?
November.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, use the proposed articles as the article one, article two.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just had a, on the pamphlet itself. Didn't know, and looking at.
Hold on, let's, let's do the, then we'll, then we'll talk about that.
Okay, give the article first.
Yeah. Cause we're just going to do an approval. Uh, is there any, this is kind of, this is important. This part of it. Very important. Everybody understand what we're doing? We're.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'd like to say. I, I do too, much as I hate to. Okay. All those opposed? Um, now, if you got.
Yeah, looking at the flyer. And again, maybe I'm reading too much. When I, when I look at the first, uh, it will be the first page. Uh, second bullet item was what's exempt from the one percent? Well, uh, what, what, the, uh, the one percent taken out of it, it said food, clothing. I didn't know because when people talk about meals and food, sometimes you can confuse and see it's up next to food. And put in parentheses groceries from Chaz and under clothing, I put in parentheses, you know. Is that, is that derbies?
Yep.
I mean, but I mean, I, I want to make it clear. I want to, so people, when they look at the top one saying, you're going to take, one percent is going to be added to rentals and meals. And I said, it's going to be added, then right under it, we say it won't be taken from food, whether I just don't want people to be confused by it.
We changed it to groceries.
Groceries.
I, and groceries and, and then that, that's, that's. But other than that, our economic development committee, we talked a little bit about, uh, this stuff and they, I thought they got it. It looked pretty good.
Um. So we, you're not going to send this out. You'll send it out with the next water bill, sure.
Which is when? Let's, uh.
No, next water bill?
Next tax, next tax.
Well, I know, we, we might just hold due ball.
I'll, uh, let me see what goes out first. I don't know what billing type it looks like right now, but the tax, depending on what, what happens tonight. Tax bill should be able to broaden the bottom off.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. So that'll welcome it first. So if that comes out today. What happens then?
This is a third vote, so.
He can't vote on the same budget.
To be honest, yeah, I don't know. I think they probably.
It's a four percent of what they had.
It isn't the same budget because they cut X amount.
Doesn't pass this time.
I don't know. I, that's, that's what the hair.
My understanding is the hairs.
We don't see.
Yep.
But if anybody, what I was getting at, if anybody sees anything that jumps out, then get, get ahold of Joe and change it up before it goes out.
This is going to go the first mailing on no matter what it is.
I put it in all.
I agree.
Anything that, anything that the town is sending out between now and, and November third.
Yeah. I hear people say, I didn't know. And nobody told me.
Make sure this is on the website.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if you would take this and just like reattach to the, yes, the board meeting. The letter from, uh, Maplewood Inn. We should attach this with the minutes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That, that's a good way for people to get information a lot of the time. Yep. Agreed.
Okay. You done with that for now? Appointment to the rescue squad.
So, uh, Mr. Calvin, he, he stepped down from the rescue squad.
What?
Um, and John, John, I don't know how to say your last name.
Sigman.
John Sigman, uh, stepped forward. He said he would like to be appointed to the rescue squad board.
Standing. Thank you.
John, let's hear it. Board has questions.
What kind of background do you have?
Okay, so here. Well, I'm waiting for you to do your. I should have your, your, your three letters, letters of recommendation right here. I'm going to give you something that two and a half years ago, I ended up going to the court. Anyhow. Uh, in central Vegas, since I was eighteen years old, I was in the fire department. Uh, involved in many aspects of the fire service. Uh, I became EMT at eighteen years old. Twenty one, I was a paramedic, a paramedic for twenty one years. Uh, went for the city of Greens for that's mainly approximately seventeen thousand people. Uh, our ambulance service there, which is just to call rescue squad here.
Happy mind, really, totally.
We got, we got eight different stations in our county if we ran. Uh. There's a big difference up here as opposed to home when it comes to emergency services, including fire, police and ambulance. It's been, it's been interesting to me to see the police sit back and see evidence. Uh. I was a deputy sheriff. I was served deputy sheriff back home. I trained line ops for man, for man trailing. Uh, the fire service, I was a line officer and charged a few stations for like fifteen years. I made it with the volunteer department. But, uh, where I came from, we put it hard. I've been involved in this all my life. I mean, I joined very good in the fire department. Just doesn't fit the mold. I didn't fit the mold, you know, I get backed away. But I still have it in my blood. I always have. Uh. And I said, why not? When I, when I saw it often for the board directors. I'm very well aware of what goes all behind the scenes in an ambulance. I know what happens in an ambulance, that it was infected.
I think for us, one of the, one of the things. Well, it was a shock when we found out that the, uh, that the rescue squad was in such trouble. We didn't realize that and it, it all, it really kind of reflected on our director not reporting us, you know? And it's not formal, it's not a formal thing, but every once in a while, just to, just to know what's going on and where they are and, and a frank discussion of where they are.
Let me ask you this. Is your rescue squad, fair game? Uh, directed by the select board?
No.
No.
It's a private and, it's a private organization that we pay. It, it's a for-profit organization that, that we pay into. Uh, taxpayer money goes in. So essentially all we have is the, the only control we have is the fifty thousand dollars we give, which is next to nothing. We know that. But it's also, um, there's a, there's a sense of ownership because this was started as a volunteer squad fifty years ago. And nobody wants to see it fail. And, and so it would be nice to have somebody that has, has, has a great, you know, has a.
That's what's background. I worked back home, called Beachway Ambulance, the name of it. Uh, it started out with a funeral director. Why are we so long? We've been here, here in our old fire chief that I spoke to you about, in Wayne for years. Uh, they started it out of a garage. And now it's turned into an eight station, uh, I mean, a two everything. And it's turned into a multi-money dollar organization. However, right now it's a little bit touchy because our, our old director, uh, I think he's got some federal money issues that he has to address right now. But, uh, but they, they, they changed like here. You know, I talked to Sean Calvin. Uh, is he still there over there?
Yeah.
And I spoke to him that one day. And I was impressed with Sean, you know, always.
They, they're changed, they've, they've changed a lot. They're getting, they're pointing in the right direction and it would be just nice to have that kind of.
Yeah, he, he impressed.
Your kind of experience.
He spoke a few times and he, you know, I was very impressed with the way that he's changing over there now. Hopefully in a positive direction and.
So. I, I echo what you say about, it's just from time to time, we, we'd love to hear from you. It's, uh, the good, the bad, the ugly. If you, uh, uh, if you have some need, we may not be able to give you much more of the moral support sometimes and other times, who, who knows? But, uh, feel free to come in and.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, talk to. Yeah, definitely. No, I mean, I feel like it'd be an asset to look at it because I don't know anybody, anything up there. I don't know anybody or anybody, so to speak. And I have a background. I know what it's like. I mean, in all aspects of the EMS, uh, the fire service. And I should, I saw it advertised and I spoke, what's it called? I thought I had it, it might, you know, have it in the magazine without.
Well. You, you may not want to volunteer, but I'll make a motion if we accept this.
Yep.
As a director for the rescue squad.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate volunteers. Be careful what you wish for, I guess.
Been there, done that, Paul. I'm going to use her for it. I'm going to use her for it.
I know.
Yeah, now who, who will I see or who will want that meeting or?
I talked to Sean, he will give you, Sean will give you the board schedule. They meet once a month on Tuesdays, but then there's, because there, and that's, that may have changed since the last time I was told, but, but there, and there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of meetings that are a little bit unscheduled because of, of the way things are going now, so.
A letter from the board to, uh, the rescue squad that he's going to find it.
Good idea. We will, we, can you put that together?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, cemetery deed.
One of them.
This is a cemetery deed for lots. Um, Joe and Susan Breeners, uh, lot thirty in section nineteen, one grave, I'm sorry. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You? And Jeff, I signed in the right place because there's a little sticky tag there.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So we've got to take the stick, yeah. Sign on any of this.
No, on the other side.
Definitely on sign.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, uh, parking lot? Thank you, moving. Local option.
Yeah, local option, thanks. Look at today. Um, Lewis Lane ownership is still with the lawyer. Um, and the personnel policy is scheduled for the next meeting.
I, I think, I think on that Lewis Lane, I think we should say it's got to be brought up to a class three road. I don't think, personally, I don't think we should do it. I think we should just give them a letter and tell them that we're not going to take care of it anymore and we're not interested in taking it over. The part that bothers me is the little, the smaller road. It's not light enough to begin with. Now, we've got asphalt there, it's either got to be ground up or something that you can't cover. That, that's just my opinion. I just feel it's going to be more of a, I think it's going to be more of a hassle prospect to do it. And if we take it over permanently, it's going to cost us money.
Go now, so they can make plans.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, that's like, yeah, my opinion, that's all it is. Just.
So let's see, let's see what it says. The lawyer said, the lawyer phrasing and if it's, is this.
On what I've heard is that the lawyer said this is going to be a problem if we just went in and plowed, correct?
He's afraid that if we go in and just take over the plowing, it would be like, um, an independent contractor plowing Shawn Park. We, we would be outside of our purview as a town. We'd be held liable for any damage or anything. There wouldn't be the, uh, uh, immunity that town receives.
Sovereign immunity.
Sovereign immunity.
Well, that is a consideration we have to take and we have to protect the town. Unfortunately, well, it isn't like the olden days when you can just, I mean, it's not like anybody was told to take care of it.
So it's not like we haven't, like, says we have to do it. I mean, on the other hand, if that's the way, if they want to really push it, we could turn around and build it for thirty years and make it. I mean, it sounds stupid, I mean, by saying that, but I mean, uh, you know, we've helped them for thirty years. You know, I mean, easily, he's not going to be in town anyway. Even with the, so all we're doing is taking over his situation.
Well, we have. We already have for thirty years.
That's what I'm saying. I, I mean, I think we've done more, I think we've done more than enough. I mean, I just, I just feel it's going to be a costly endeavor for the town. And we don't need any more costs.
Going back to when Red Dorian thought it was a good idea.
Well.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So enough is enough.
Didn't do me any good on Route twenty-two A this year, I can tell you that.
Is, is the tax stabilization under parking lot, is, is that the one that, uh, at EDC that we, a, a policy on, uh, we pulled that one up, so there's some work being done on tax stabilization.
Well, we've got, we've got a policy right now.
We, we looked at it and, and we're going, we're working on coming back with some tweaking and some, uh, to make it a little more, and some recommendations to make it easier to implement and have the board review. So just to give you that jump, we're working on this, if you didn't want us.
So we're. Right now, there's nothing. We'll wait to see what the, the lawyer's going to say about Lewis Lane. We think we know what he's going to say.
Yeah, throwing a call for him.
All right.
Weren't we going to, uh, sign off on the personnel policy tonight?
Well, we got pushed out. Yeah, we, we pushed it back, uh, um, we thought we had more visitors and, to be honest, I thought these topics would generate more conversation than they did.
No worries. Next week.
Never know.
It's, it's, sometimes it's true.
It's not over yet. Don't, don't get cocky. Um, board roundtable, Carol?
Uh, I'm wondering about that red car on North Main as well, because I've almost hit it about twenty-five times.
The red car on North Main?
It's been parked out with no, there's no license plates. Jay, Jay brought it up last time.
So it was a truck, there was a truck there before.
But you brought up the red car too. It's still there. No license plates. It's even not really quite up to the curb, but at least I think it's not, when I almost hit it every time.
Uh, we'll take a look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, I emailed Joe on, yesterday, I guess, that the street sign on our road that says Bridge Pond Road is gone. I think it was vandalized. So, I mean, I think the town, it's the town's property, right? They replace it. But I don't know what to do about the other part of it. I have an idea what happened, but I won't say anything until it happens a second time.
Okay.
But how long does it take to get that replaced?
Um, they're going to look, they said they may have one down at the shed. That would be remarkable. Um, if, if not, we'd have to, we usually place orders in big batches just to make it cheaper for shipping. Two or three months.
So we won't be expecting any Christmas packages this year.
We, we just placed an order last week versus no parking. Yeah.
All right, that was all I had.
Is there any way to catch enough for them and put out a order?
Oh, oh, I, I asked Jim, so we'll see what he says about it. Yeah.
They can process them. You know they're having them.
Yeah.
It does worry me a little bit because it's a, it's not a familiar road to people, more importantly, for the ambulance, which we've had to fall several times up there, more emergency vehicles.
That's actually true. We talked about, um, I talked about it today and it is a private road, but we do supply the signs just for that, for, you know, nine one one.
Well, that's why that road got named, because back when they, it was a mandatory thing that we had to do for nine one one. Before that, we were just called Scott Shell. Probably seven or eight years ago.
What's happening with pretty quick sidewalks and about, you have landscaped around them? Um, on twenty-two, the, the road that we just done, I mean, it's, there are others of stones and sometimes they haven't, I mean, they should have, they should have stopped sort of a vast, some of them are even, you know, deeper than what the other ones are. And I asked them to look at sidewalk up there at my house because it made the sidewalk wider than what the sidewalk is. And the town sometimes backs, back in front of my house and falls back into Academy Street. So that sidewalk sticks out about that far. So they're going to be catching it unless see that or we put a pole or something, so you don't, I just don't want to see it get ripped off. That's been broken, you know?
Yeah, we don't want to see our trucks standing.
Well, no, that's true. And I, I talked to the guy that, uh, I talked to Jesse and pointed it out to him and that's about as far as it went. But I just think they should be, I think they should grass, there's some pretty big spots beside the new sidewalks. And I think we should have landscaped them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with them if they could.
Okay, then I got a complaint, two complaints about the Elson Second Street that burned. They're complaining about the smell. And one woman said the slate's falling off the road, so I don't know if there's anything we can do about anything like that. I don't, I told her I'd bring it up. I don't think there's anything we can really do.
They, they still deal with the insurance company?
Uh, less, I heard they are, they're, there is, is private property and he's going through the process. There's really a.
I just, I told her I'd bring it up. That's, I, I, I told her I didn't think there's anything we could do about it. And then, um, another one is, is the same thing I asked her last year, never get it done. The signs, the stop signs, uh, Academy, Cedar, Pleasant, Cemetery. You can't see the stop signs. There's so much brush. And they got to go back down the road a little bit, look up. The concern, just as being from one of the neighbors up there, because there's so many young kids up there now. There's a lot of kids that are playing in the street. And they're just shooting right through the intersection by just up the east side. You can't see the signs.
It was Academy, Cedar, Cemetery.
Academy, Cemetery, Academy Cemetery, um, yeah, Cedar and Pleasant. All, all the, the ones on Cedar and Academy aren't too bad because they're all pretty low, aggressive, they're all, they're hidden. And what we want to do about, to grass at the curve this year.
Grass at the curve?
Yeah, between the road and the curve. It's, once again, it's outrageous and up in front of Stewart's on that, uh, in, uh, the white, the stuff is that high. There's weeds that are that high up there.
Between the curve, that's the.
For the left hand, for the right hand, right hand, north hand.
Oh, oh, I know what you're talking about.
But the weeds, they're that high, you know? And it just, it looks terrible.
I'll get them down there.
And then, you know, some of the sites along the road, I know we talked before about it, people take care of them. I think what's on the roadside, I feel that should be, we should be taking care of them. We should, yeah. And one quick thing here, this was brought up, just again, it's not anything that we can act on, maybe we can, uh, in one of the governor's, um, messages, they're talking about possible building in prison. I'm wondering if we should look into, once again, the, the property down here for prison. I mean, I wonder if we should try to throw our hat and then get in for it or, just a suggestion. I mean, there was a lot of pros and cons to it last time.
Which property is that?
It's where they're going to put a lot of beaver, beaver wood over here.
That landlocked part.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think that goes back to that, Wilson.
If the state was there one time and they did look at it, when we talked about building the prison in Springfield, they had looked at that, just down here. Uh, I'm just wondering if that's something, I mean, that's, they're just talking, but if we just, you know, it's jobs, you bring jobs in, I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons to it also.
Population changes.
Yeah, there'd be population change because, and you know, well, I mean.
It doesn't change for the good.
No, no, you're right, because you're, you know, but I, I'm just, again, it's just a suggestion, I'm just seeing what everybody else thinks, if we should try to do it.
You know, let me, let me see what that looks like and.
Just, you know, whatever. I mean, I'm just, again, I'm not pushing for it, I just, it was brought to my attention and I told them again, I'd bring it up.
Yeah, that's, that's fun.
Okay.
All right, yeah, if there's some way to, to put in a bid, I'll come back to the board and, and see if there's an offer we want to make in terms of taxation or something.
I mean, maybe it's not even running water. I don't.
Okay. That's, that's all I got.
Well, when I'm up at the state house, we'll bring it up.
Yeah, there you go. You know, a great location.
What?
Um, I know we're going to start a paving here soon, but the school started here September eighth, the crosswalks and painting of the crosswalks in front of grade school. The, even the school sign in the street, you can't even read the school anymore. There's some, there, there's, um, uh, that I, I'm just wondering if we could, uh, take care of. I don't want to do stuff that's, that's just going to get paved over, but we've got places that we can, I think we can do some painting, find out if our equipment even works.
I think the crosswalks are more, more school starts.
Yeah.
And we're getting close.
Yeah, we, we've talked about it. And we've talked about it several times. Let me see where, that will take, that will take three or four guys off other projects. So everything that we talked about today is not pushed back.
You've only got, you've only got one, two, three, because the state replaced all the other ones. No, really, there's only the one in front of the school, one down wider, but, you know, the, well, I heard of information, it's really, and that's about it. There's three weeks, they start, they start September eighth, you know, two weeks. And there's any chance of getting a little better paint put on. I know it's a little more expensive.
We, we actually, we reached out to the folks that were painting in town just to see if they'd do it.
I'll see what it costs just to go.
Yeah, and they just said they were straight up, they just couldn't do it. So we, we thought that same thing, let's just be done with it.
Just get a better paint so it lasts a little.
Yes, I agree.
That's, that's the board's fault. We, we chose, we chose not to use the, the good stuff because we're trying to save a bunch of money.
Yeah, what's your pay for it?
Well, we, we thought we could paint twice as often, Bob, for less money.
Yeah, I know.
There, there was a method behind it, it's just not getting done.
Yep, you're right.
And the only other item, uh, the, that RV that we heard a couple meetings ago that, uh, was parked down in, at the other end, in the free parking, all they did was move it up on Washington. Now it's creating a hazard, you can't see coming out the street. Uh, that's been, I don't know, but still, I think it was the last time I checked, it's still, still sitting there, uh, if we could, I don't know what our stance is for.
From the time they moved it from private park or public parking on here, it's parked up the side of the.
It's parked on the side of the.
I think the reason is because. You know, imminent dark.
I, I came down, it was two o'clock maybe, and it wasn't there because I've been watching too, but it was gone as of two o'clock at the back.
He probably, he probably pulls in there in the, in the evening.
Yeah, I'll give.
Most of the time it stays all day.
That's all I have.
Jeff?
I'm all set for tonight.
I think we talked about everything. Oh, one question, do we still have a, as long as you said the insurance company's coming in, do we still have a safety committee that meets?
I met with the safety committee one time, so there is one, but yeah, we haven't met.
We should probably get that going again. Just, just to keep, and I got one other question. Guy stopped me who isn't a citizen in Fairhaven, but sometimes, sometimes you need different eyes. He asked about maybe putting a, a stop sign instead of doing it the way we do at the end of the Veterans Memorial, putting a stop sign across from the library and having people go, come twenty-two and, you know, come this way, not having to stop as opposed to the people, as opposed to having to stop there. I just wondered if anybody thought about that. It's not, if you look, there's a crosswalk there, so you have to stop occasionally anyways. It's not a bad idea, it slows traffic around the, around the school area and the library, but I don't, I'm not sure.
Where do you want to put it?
Right across from the library, at the end of the Veterans Memorial, right there where that, where that, where that crosswalk is. And then you wouldn't have to stop coming, coming south on, uh, And then you wouldn't have to stop coming, coming south on, uh, twenty-two, or. You could pull out there, because it's sometimes.
I see, you're gonna stop on four eight.
Yeah. And, instead of, uh.
Westbound only?
Hmm?
Westbound only?
Well. Yeah, well, you'd have, yeah, you'd only have a stop sign on, on the, yes, westbound. Southbound.
So, whatever that is. Kind of going, right? You'd almost have to go to the state, right, state highway?
State highway, but it's in our town, so, I, I'm not sure.
We have that.
I just wonder, I, it, it, it's difficult sometimes to see somebody coming the other way. It's, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I just, I'd like to hear what everybody else, just, just drive through there and see, see what you think, because I, I know.
I'd, I'd rather see when, if you're gonna put a stop sign, I'd rather see it with the yield signs on twenty-two.
Well, see, the same, you, you still, you know.
There's still enough parents coming by the school.
Yeah, you don't accomplish anything, because you still have to, I don't turn this way to look, see.
I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
But anyway, that, just thought I'd bring that up.
So that yield would not, would be, uh, free flow?
Yeah. And the stop sign would be, would be on four eight.
That we'd have a few. Forgetful people in accidents. I don't like the idea of a stop sign only going in one direction. Because I don't think I, you, hard to get used to.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
The only way you.
If you're going this way, you stop, going that way, you don't. I don't know, I.
Um, it's good, good, good move to go.
Maybe bring that up at some next meeting, but.
See what it is. I, I just checked with the, checked with the state, they, they probably tell you absolutely not, probably for that reason.
I never thought, the stop sign, right at Memorial Park, it's good. Because, you know, probably the traffic, instead of letting the traffic, whatever, that was very vigorous.
Uh, financial report. You ready, Jeff?
Yep, checkbook is four hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred three dollars and sixty-seven cents, so we've got a little more money in there. And motion to pay the general fund warrant, fifty-four thousand one hundred eighteen, fifty-four thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is closed.
Aye.
Nobody sign this, okay.
And?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, you need that. Well. Um. So executive session. Doing here, motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.